... United States of America and the Republic for which stands the Constitution, under God, and indivisible, with the freedom of speech and of all.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Carrillo, second by... Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Arquitas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actions taken in closed session. Board took the following actions on a hearing case number twenty-four, twenty-five, dash, three. Motion made by Ms. Carrillo. Ms. Carrillo, second by Mr. Herrera, on a vote of four to zero, abstained Mr. Rojas, absent Ms. Robinson and Ms. Luhon. Admission approved.
Yes, thank you, President Feliz. We have a couple report outs as well. So, in closed session, the board voted on a five to zero vote with two trustees absent. And the motion was made by trustee Rojas and a second by trustee Arquitas in a vote of five to zero. Again, two trustees absent, Ms. Trustee Robinson and trustee Luhon. The board approved the written settlement agreement for the resolution of OAH case number two-zero-two, four-zero-six, zero-eight-nine-one. The resolution includes educational service funds not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars, an independent education evaluation in the area of psychoeducation not to exceed a total of seven thousand dollars, attorney's fees not to exceed twelve thousand dollars. In exchange of that, this will dismiss OAH case two-zero-two, four, zero-six, zero-eight-nine-one with prejudice and a waiver of all educationally related claims to date against the district. Additionally, in closed session, the board approved the appointment of Crystal Soria to the Director of Student Activities at Alisal High School on a motion from trustee Arquitas and a second from trustee Huerta and a vote of five to zero with trustees Robinson and Luhon absent. So, we'll welcome Crystal Soria to our school district here very shortly. So, those are the report outs from closed session.
Student Board presentation. Tonight, we'll start with Washington Middle School.
Hi, my name is Elena Moreno. I am the ASB president at Washington Middle School.
And I'm Clark Wilson, the ASB vice president at Washington Middle School.
And we are here to present the amazing things happening at Washington Middle School so far this school year.
One of our big focuses at Washington Middle School is on wellness. If students do not feel secure, safe, and happy, learning will not happen. So, it is important that we focus first on wellness. We have a large wellness team on our campus, as you can see by all the people in the pictures. We have our principals, our counseling staff, our intervention specialist, our restorative justice facilitator, Monterey County Behavioral Health Clinician, and we partner with Community Human Services and Harmony at Home.
To make sure that the students are doing okay, every Monday, we have a Bronco check-in form that allows the wellness team and our administrative team to check in with students that need support. The graph shows that we have gotten eight-hundred-twenty-seven responses to that form, fifty-five percent of them being seventh graders and forty-four percent of them being eighth graders. The chart shows the number of students that needed follow-ups based on their responses. And the good news is, none of them needed follow-ups based on self-harm or suicide risk. At the top right of the screen, you can see the forms that we have around campus in which students can scan the codes with their Chromebooks for support at any time.
As part of our PBIS program, teachers nominate WOW students, otherwise known as Students of the Month, to get a free dress day and celebrate with an ice cream sundae. For the month of August, we had two-hundred-and-twenty-five WOW students. The pictures here show the... Show the ice cream sundae party we had last week to celebrate the WOW students.
Additional incentives we have as part of the PBIS program are quarterly field trips. Of two-hundred-twenty... Oh, my gosh, wait. Of two-hundred-twenty-five students that were WOFL last month, some of them will be able to attend a field trip to El Paso Park on September twenty-fifth of the tour of the Giant Stadium, and then they will go to Pier Thirty-Nine in San Francisco. The slideshow has other field trips that are incentives for different things. Second quarter, there will be a raffle for students that have not had any tardies during the month of October. Third quarter, there will be a raffle for students who have not received any UNs during Semester One. And during fourth quarter, there will be a raffle for students who were most improved.
The start of our school year begins before the... even before the official day one. About a week before our school starts, our web leaders come to school to get trained, and the next day, they host Bronco Roundup, which is an orientation program for incoming seventh grade... seventh graders. A few hundred of our incoming seventh graders showed up. They got school tours, did team building activities so they could meet other new students. They learned tips for success in middle school, and at the end, they got to have a picnic lunch with their web group. The top picture above shows students in our gym walking through what we call the gauntlet. The left picture shows students doing team building exercises, and the picture on the right shows web... shows a group of web leaders and their students out on a tour. Web leaders also come to school early on the first day to make sure that everybody feels welcomed. They all create posters and wear their web leader shirts so that they're visible... so they're visible throughout the day, so any students that get lost could ask them for help. Web stands for where everybody belongs, and at our school, we want to make sure that everybody on our campus feels welcomed and that they belong.
At the begin... at the beginning of the school year, teachers had training and students had training. Teachers are continuing to focus on school literacy and analyzing at star reading data. They are also focusing on GRR strategies and lesson planning. GRR stands for gradual release of responsibility. In order for teachers to not only see an example of a lesson taught with GRR techniques, but also get a feeling of what it is like to be an English learner in a classroom that is taught in a language that is not your first language, teachers were broken up into five groups and taught a lesson in the following language... languages: Korean, Greek, Samoan, Tagalog, and Ilocano. From the experience, PE staff, for example, realized that they needed to include a lot more pictures and graphic organizers in their beginning of your instructions. Overall, the lessons were well-received, and we think it is really cool that we have such a diverse staff at Washington Middle School. Students also received training at the beginning of the year in regards to yonder pouches and cell phones. So far, the yonder pouch programs seem to be working out really well. At first, students were released from classes a little bit early if they were riding the bus in order to have time to get all the yonder pouches unlocked. But in recent weeks, everyone has figured out the system, and it does not take that long to get everyone unlocked and off-campus. The staff at Washington Middle School really think that the yonder pouches are helping with student success and our continued safety on our campus.
One of the ways that we get students involved on our campus is by offering intramurals at lunch throughout the school year. In the month of August, we had volleyball intramurals. We had eight different teams compete in it... compete against each other, and the team picture up there was our winning team, the Florida Gators. All of our intramural teams are college names because it gets student use... students used to hearing about col... about different colleges and helps create a college focus.
Another way we get students involved on campus is by offering a lot of clubs at lunch. We currently have over seventeen different clubs going on each week at Washington Middle School. The second week of school, we had our annual club day in which all of the clubs came out and showcased their club. If students wanted, they could sign up, or they could just find out more about the club. If students wanted... Wait, the pictures above show Club Day. Some of the clubs we offer are PBIS Club, Wellness Wednesday Club, Fitness Club, Art Club, Washington DC Club, Yoga Club, Sci-Fi Fantasy Club, and Multiculture Club, and more. We also recently hosted our first after-school party called Broncos by the Bay. We call our after-school parties "parties, not dances" because we don't want students who don't like to dance to feel like they can't come out and have fun. So, in an effort to make everyone feel like they can be part of the fun, we offer up different activities for students to do. This year, we had a giant inflatable obstacle course, a basketball shootout, yard games, Large Connect Four, and Kona Ice was there, and of course, our own DJ Money. We had over two-hundred students attend our after-school party, and the slideshow shows some of the pictures from the event.
Our fall sports program started up about a week ago. We currently have girls volleyball, both seventh grade team and eighth grade team, seventh grade and eighth grade boy soccer, and cross-country. No game... no games have been played as of yet, so sadly, we don't have any pictures to share with you. But next time, we can give you some stats and share some pictures as well. Typically, we don't talk about things that happen in the future on our board report. But we do want you to save the date. September nineteenth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM, we are hosting a fall festival at our school, which we invite Bronco families and staff to come spend an evening together with food, games, and fun. We'd love for all of you to come be part of the fun.
We want to thank... we want to thank you for listening and for your continued support of students at Washington Middle School as well as in our district. Thank you.
President Feliz have a question. Elena or Clark, what is a WOW card, and how do I get one?
So, a WOW card is like Student of the Month, and so teachers nominate different student in that period for being like responsible, respectful, and safe, which is following the Bronco way. And you get free dress for the next day as well as an ice cream sundae in the garden.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, El Puente.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President, Board members, Superintendent Burns, and Cabinet members. My name is Sienna Asmath.
And I am Cynthia Verdine. We are currently members of El Puente's Leadership Club, which I am the president of. We are excited to fill you in on all of the exciting things happening at El Puente School.
We would like to get started by providing data about last year's graduating class. We are proud to share that El Puente had one-hundred-and-thirty-one high school graduates, which does not include students who decided to graduate from their home schools. We also had fifteen students promote from middle school. Our graduate count includes four students who, as juniors, earned their diplomas by completing two-hundred-and-twenty credits within three years. We would also like to highlight that one of our summer graduates graduated as a sophomore and was part of the dual enrollment program at Harnell College. Thanks to the flexible nature of El Puente, we are able to learn at our own pace and possibly graduate early.
During our first day of school, our leadership club welcomed three-hundred-and-forty-nine high school and middle school students back to our campus. Leadership members greeted our fellow WOFLs with breakfast, which included bagels, danishes, cookies, and orange juice. We would like to thank our teachers and club advisors, Ms. Robinson and Ms. Gomez, for helping us start the year off right.
We would like to show you a short video from our back-to-school night, which highlights the commitment of our parents to our education. I don't know how to play it. Thank you. We want to give a special thanks to McDonald's for donating meals at our back-to-school night for the third year in a row. We would also like to thank Mr. Ramirez for making this possible by connecting us with those in our community who are willing to help.
At EPS, we are the pack. Everyone practices being persistent, accountable, courteous, and kind. Students are rewarded with physical or virtual WOFLpaws when we practice being packed. WOFLpaws can be used to purchase items in the PBIS store or submit it into a box for a weekly raffle winner. We also celebrate Students of the Month at a luncheon with principals, staff, parents, and of course, the students. This year, we hope to expand our recognizations for students and academic celebrations.
At EPS, we have an intervention specialist that works very closely with staff, students, parents, and other stakeholders to improve student academics, attendance, and social emotional well-being. Last school year, nearly two-hundred lone wolf referrals were processed by EPS. El Puente has a referral process where Mr. Vialobos meets with the students and parents or guardians in order to come up with an improvement plan.
Before we begin with data, we would like to thank the board and leadership for building our recently integrated wellness center, MCMH, which has become our safe space. Currently, our wellness center is shared space that serves EPS, Mount Toro High School, and Car Lake students. Our wellness center staff is split between all the sites mentioned. Within our data, you will notice that a large amount of our WOFLs visit the wellness center due to social emotional needs. However, something important to highlight is that our wellness checks out demonstrates a better... a better emotional state when we have the opportunity to be heard by the staff formed by our restorative justice facilitator, social workers, MCMH, CHS, and Sticks and Stones.
Ms. Archuleta and Ms. Mesa are the school's social workers for alternative education. They serve El Puente, Mount Toro High School, and Car Lake Community Day School. This year, the social workers are planning to provide one-on-one counseling to students in need of support. They are planning to facilitate groups such as Girasol and a social skills group. They will be offering Wellness Wednesdays for each site, where they will teach students about different coping strategies to help manage stress and anxiety. The social workers are introducing the Wellness Club to El Puente students, who will help plan and facilitate wellness activities on campus. This includes wellness fairs, where community partners and organizations come on campus and spread awareness about mental health services available to the students. Oh, thank you.
Our restorative justice facilitator has made school culture and community building a priority. Mr. Ramirez is actively involved in all Tier One, Two, and Three interventions and assists us in WOFL Wednesday, field trips, and activities. Last spring, twenty-nine of our middle and high school students successfully completed his Joven Noble sessions, which is equivalent to three-thousand-six-hundred minutes of group. Joven Noble is an indigenous-based program which focuses on youth development, support, and leadership enhancements. In the coming weeks, many students will begin their 2024 sessions. Restorative practices have given WOFLs alternatives to punitive disciplinary policies. Alternatives have ranged from a restorative project which implements research, ownership, accountability, reflection, and empathy. They also include community-building circles, classroom presentations, check-ins, and mediations when necessary.
EPS staff did a training to collect data for the WASC mid-cycle visit. WASC plans to visit the school in the beginning of February. Everyone is working in their teams to update our report. WASC only gave the school one recommendation, which is to simplify our goals. This will keep our school accredited and ensure that our diplomas are validated.
As a school, we are implanting a writing strategy that will help students articulate their responses in an organized and academic manner. Students will be using the raised writing strategy to write constructive responses throughout the year. The topic of the article students will read is post-secondary education.
This year, we have implemented a tutorial period in which our English learning students receive support from our ELD teachers. This targeted intervention gives our EL students the assistance they need in order to progress through their independent studies coursework in a timely manner.
Our college and career readiness program supports all students throughout the... their journey for exploring college and career options to enrolling in a university or college. We offer numerous opportunities for students to engage with professionals through career fairs and visit institutions via field trips. Additionally, we connect students with colleges like Cornell College to facilitate successfully enrollment and completion. We are committed to adapting to our students' needs and providing the support they require to achieve their goals after high school.
Isabella Carmona and Carlos Lopez Barajas, two of our most recent graduates, have chosen to continue their higher education at UC Merced and CSUMB respectively. We are incredibly proud of their achievements and are excited for them to share their experiences with our current students during the upcoming college tours to these universities.
We currently have fourteen students enrolled in eight of the eleven courses offered at Mission Trails ROP. Additionally, currently have twelve students enrolled in our sole CTE course offered at El Puente, child development.
I'm currently taking an auto-service class and building on the knowledge I gained last year in my engine maintenance class at ROP. At El Puente, we have many opportunities to participate in field trips. These trips give us the opportunity to visit new places, create new memories, share new experiences, and bond with our classmates. On this slide is our current field trip agenda for... for this school year. We love that all El Puente students can attend any of these field trips if in good academic standing, and that they are not limited to specific groups or clubs. One of the most memorable experiences on these trips for me was watching a basketball game at Cal Poly Humboldt, where we could ready... really get a feel for the school spirit and community on the college campus.
As a leadership club, we do our best to create a school community that includes all of our peers. We plan activities that all are welcome to participate in. We are not like the traditional schools in our district, which sometimes makes planning school events a little more difficult, but we are trying our best to build up school spirit. Last year, we had our first prom, and it was a success. Everyone had a great time, and we will be hosting another prom this school year. This year, we will be planning a homecoming week to unite students and celebrate our WOFLpack pride.
Here is an example of our monthly calendars that are shared with both students and parents. These calendars will include school events that we plan, important meetings which parents can attend, and events happening in our community.
We are excited for all the great things to come this year and can't wait to share them with you all at the next board presentation. We appreciate you all taking the time to learn more about all of the great things happening at our school. Go WOFLs!
Thank you very much.
Just one comment real quick. Let your new principal know, nineteen slides?
Good job, Bernie.
Great job.
Next up, Mount Toro High School.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, Superintendent and Cabinet members. My name is Monica Garcia. I am a senior at Montoro High School, and I am a returning student board representative. Here with me, I have a fellow classmate, Jesus Loyavarón, also a senior. We are excited to be here and share great things about our school.
Hello, hello. Good afternoon. Mount Toro has eight learning cycles. We receive credits and grades at the end of each cycle. We just ended Learning Cycle One, and now we have started Learning Cycle Two, which is a fifteen-credit cycle. We also have edgenuity courses that help students recover credits at a faster pace. At the end of each cycle, we engage in college and career readiness lessons. So far this school year, ninety-one students have entered... has entered Mount Toro High School.
At Montoro High School, when a student is a graduate, they get announced over the inicum, and everybody cheers for them. So far, we have four graduates. Here you can see some pictures of them.
We have a new teacher here in Montoro. His name is Mr. Davidson. Students created fractured value drawings. Students use graphite pencils to fill in shapes from light to dark, displaying the shading techniques learned in class. This project was inspired by the works of Pablo Picasso and Juan Guirres. Our counseling team has created a bulletin board with key informations for students. Students can request copies of transcripts, diploma record cards, and schedule meetings using a QR code. This has been very helpful.
On August first and August second, teachers returned from summer break and participated in professional development. They had the opportunity to collaborate. They engaged in connecting activities, and teachers received constructing meeting kits. These kits help encourage students in daily talks, routines, and assist with literacy skills.
Our first day of school was on Tuesday, August sixth. Everyone had their schedules. Teachers and students were excited to start the school year. We even had a few guests visit our campus, board members and district admins. Thank you for visiting.
Our back-to-school night was held Wednesday, August fourteenth. We had music performed by Grupo Estilo. The Monterey County Food Bank provided dinner, and we had ten resource community agencies on site. Parents visited classrooms and had the opportunity to meet the teachers. It was a wonderful event.
At Mount Toro High School, teachers nominate students for the Student of the Month program. Students who are recognized and demonstrate academic achievements and improvement, they also demonstrate the be more... the be more rule: motivated, organized, respectful, and engaged. Here you can see some of my classmates with their certificates.
We have two clubs on campus. Postpong Club provides education on safe dates, positive choices, and healthy boundaries. The Wanas Club encourages other students to participate in mindful and wellness activities. Both clubs collaborate to host wellness events and fairs throughout the school year.
Our food services team provides Mount Toro, Car Lake, El Puente, and the adult transition students with healthy and nutritious foods every day. They have added new selections like chicken wraps and protein boxes, similar to the Starbucks Protein Pack. We are so grateful to this wonderful team. Recently, Jesus, the cafeteria manager, cooked vegetables from our very own Mount Toro High School garden. Students really enjoyed the zucchini and Swiss char. Next up, we'll be having beef with salsa, peppers, and tomatoes from the garden.
Ms. Johnson, our science teacher, brings science to life with the Mount Toro garden. We're able to grow our own vegetables such as zucchini, pumpkin, pimpers, carrots, tomatoes, berries, and more. Students are responsible for watering the veggies. We also keep a compost bin. This is used for fertilizer for the garden. The flower garden is a pollinator garden to attract beneficial insects to har... pollinate our garden. We are excited to experiment with our garden.
We have our very own wellness center that services Mount Toro, Car Lake, and El Puente students. Students are able to check in with social workers, therapists, and other providers to assist with social emotional wellness.
The Wanas Center providers also offer groups such as Girasol, Joven Noble, and the Social Skills Group. These are wonderful opportunities for the students to be active participants and become acquainted with mindful and wellness activities.
At Mount Toro High School, our teachers review classroom lessons during homeroom. Students are expected to be more: motivated, organized, respectful, and engaged. And students receive tour chips to be able to win prizes. Students also receive free popcorn when they turn in their tour chips. This happens every Wednesday.
The Child Development Center is shared between Montoro and El Puente teen parents. This service is part of the teen parent program. The Child Development Center has caring providers that provide age-appropriate activities for the infants and toddlers. Teen parents are able to continue their education due to this service.
Some of our upcoming events include field trips, senior parent meetings, financial aid workshops, incentive days, spirit days, and a special event called She Believes She Could, So She Did, will take place on Friday, October twenty-fifth, instead of the displayed date. You are welcome to attend.
Thank you for your continued support of Montoro High School. We appreciate you. Go Toros!
Thank you very much. Individuals desiring to address the board.
So, I have no slips tonight?
Okay. District Communications Employee Organization, CSEA. SVFT. No? Okay.
Oh, she is. I was gonna say no.
You were lost. I saw you earlier.
Thank you for your patience. Let me first recognize the stellar folks behind me. We have two representatives from La Paz Middle School. We have Alisal High School, Elsisal, the Ed Services Office, and Rancho San Juan. I appreciate them being here. Good evening, Board, Superintendent Burns, and Cabinet. SVFT would first like to recognize the fabulous student presentations, and I want to recognize Washington Middle School. I wish they were here. They should be proud that they went first for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. That's a lot to ask for middle school students. It's equally inspiring to hear from Mount Toro and El Puente, representing the lives... their lives, representative and student representatives, and learn about their programs. Yes, there were quite a few slides, but that's okay. They have a robust program. Next, SVFT would like to sincerely recognize the work and commitment to the district of Mr. Hinton. He's walked into quite a significant situation, and we appreciate it. Yes, there are early emails and late calls, and this is how HR should work, which means solving issues as quickly as possible. This sounds very simple, but employees are getting responses to their emails, and it's a breath of fresh air and a sense of relief having him there. and it's a breath of fresh air and a sense of relief having him there and we want to thank you, Mr. Hinton. The next celebration and item deserving of gratitude to the superintendent, the board, and the middle school principals, and the many teachers that have come to speak to the board in the past few years, is the decision to implement the Yonder Pockets, cellphone pockets in our middle schools. Here is an example of data that demonstrates the changes. I know it's small, but I'm not allowed to give you anything. This is the first six weeks of last year. The scale goes up to ten. So there are at least thirty incidents in the first six weeks that required referrals. This is this year, the first four weeks. And the scale only goes up to four because they only have five incidences. And the sites, all of them, but specifically this one attributes it to the fact that the students don't have cell phones. I would invite the board to ask the middle schools to collect data on discipline, comparing the first six weeks of last year with this year to see where we can even make more changes. Now SVFT would once again ask that the board request of their cabinet and staff to collaborate on large projects. The most current example is the presentation and resolution on attendance. We find it interesting that the District is announcing Attendance Awareness Month and the employees who have the most contact with students and families aren't brought to the table to brainstorm ideas of how to make this sustainable and a clear plan. The importance of attendance shouldn't be a month, and I know that that's not the intention of this, but instead a cultural reset that helps everyone understand why students are chronically absent and match families with resources. I simply don't understand except that Cabinet is staying in the mindset, possibly, of the previous Assistant Superintendent of Student Services who would not meet with SVFT. SVFT can be a partner if the District wants. Meanwhile, at sites, collaboration and partnership really positively have highlighted two critical issues that the board should be aware of. First, we are having our site visits, our fall site visits, and we've been to three middle schools, two, three middle schools and one high school. And what sites are discovering is that they are at least, at least, a handful of incoming seventh graders who are non-readers. What that means is they can't recognize phonemes, so groups of letters that make a sound. This isn't to place blame on any of the feeder districts. Instead, it's to highlight the urgent need to work with our feeder districts and that includes Santa Rita and the other middle school districts to address literacy for all students. Teachers are at a loss of where to start with a seventh grader who can't identify even a simple sentence in their math class. One math teacher shared with us today that the student simply looked up at her and said, "I can't read." It's all of our responsibility. The second issue that we're finding, and it happens every couple of years, is the inappropriate placement of students with disabilities. Our feeder districts, for the most part, have their moderate to severe students in special day classes, meaning they stay with the same teacher most of the day. In transition meetings, and they enter our seventh grade, or at Rancho San Juan when they enter ninth grade, they are being put straight into six classes. And in the fifth week of school, everyone is getting comfortable and those kids that need a smaller learning environment and more support are starting to act out because they're very, very frustrated. This transition is too severe for them. We want them in the least restrictive environment, but we have basically thrown them out into six classes without support. Board, we ask you to work with our feeder districts and plan better for the transition because every family deserves to understand the best learning environment for their students. In closing, today was the first day of the four minimum days for high schools. The minimum, the high, the middle schools had their initial or additional one. And what this took was the membership to accept to work a longer day in order to have the instructional minutes to have minimum days. However, there is an urgency to fill the Assistant Superintendent position of Instructional Services. There were a lot of fractured decisions because there is nobody leading collaboratively with directors, site principals, and instructional leaders. I heard from some sites that it was productive, inspiring, they had time to meet. I heard from others that it was top-down and very frustrating. Unless there is better coordination, SVFT membership will not vote for those additional minutes. And that is unfortunate. Because the additional time, either for professional development or PLC, is what high schools need in order to meet the demands that today's education system needs. Please, no more appointments for pivotal positions. Hold interviews and find qualified leaders. Instructional services needs to be filled. Tomorrow's the anniversary of nine eleven. Many of our students were not even born. But following that tragedy that most of us lived through, our country was incredibly united. Let us remember what it is to have a strong country and remember those that perished and all the families that have suffered. Let the Salinas Union High School District recognize the day by reflecting on how we can all take care of one another, our community members, and dedicate ourselves to do something good for Salinas. Thank you very much for your service. It is much appreciated.
Thank you. Mr. Rerta, you can go first.
All right. Last week, I attended the Washington Middle School Back-to-School Night and I'd like to commend Principal Lopez and Assistant Principal Schillstone for their wonderful job of addressing the crowd seamlessly in English and Spanish. The gym was packed and it was great to see in the classrooms some teachers who were bilingual and just the seamless transition of introducing themselves and getting to know the parents and students from one language to the other. It was really, really good and I think they did a really good job. So congratulations to Washington Middle School. And then as a, another hat I wear is I'm with the Salinas Kiwanis Club of Literacy and I attended the Big Sur International Marathon Foundation Reception for Community Volunteers. And who did I run into? But Mr. Chris Evans, who is our agricultural teacher at Rancho San Juan. And we began having discussion about our ag programs and how he's interested in expanding that program and making a bridge between our high school to the local industries. But we weren't able to complete the conversation, so I left. Less than forty-eight hours later, I'm at the Monterey County Fair and who do I run into?
Chris Evans.
Thank you. And we continued our conversation. And we spoke at greater length about his desire, maybe others' desire, to really link our agricultural programs to a twenty-first century agricultural business and what that means. And so I'd really like to continue that conversation and maybe move in that direction where we can build partnerships with local ag industries. So when our students graduate from our schools, they know exactly what they're getting into as opposed to, well, here's the curriculum from years past. So that was very exciting for me and I enjoyed seeing all the animals and the students at the fair. We go every year and it was, it was really good to see all of them there and talk with them. And then finally, on June twenty-fifth this year, Superintendent Burns introduced a hate speech policy to the board. And so I'd like Mr. Burns to bring that back at the next meeting as far as how it's being rolled out and where we stand with that policy. That's all I have.
I wanted to kind of echo what Ms. Bastard brought up on the chronic absenteeism. We, I actually, maybe they'll report this on today's agenda, is in relation to an email I sent the beginning of the, of the month of August. As we're, you know, starting the school, the new school year, I'm reminded of the expulsions that come before us this previous year and one of the common themes among them was their chronic absenteeism. And the report that's in our board packet does include some of the information, but I was looking for, I wasn't able to locate anything except for our March twelfth dashboard presentation, March twelfth, twenty twenty-four meeting. But I was looking for a broken down by grade, income, home language, disability, foster care, experiencing homelessness, what's their mode of learning and...
Data.
Data, yeah. And were they excused or unexcused? More importantly, I wanted to know what are, how many of the students that are coming back from last year that were over that ten percent? What are the systems in place to identify them as they start, you know, the school year and they're reaching that ten percent mark level and what are the levels of support or what kind of support services are available to our students as they get to the ten percent or over the, over ten percent? And is each school site doing this level of support services the same at each site? And how often do we evaluate the data and the preventative tools that we're using? So just, that was on that. This one, maybe if we don't get everything we need from this report, maybe, you know, take a longer look at that because I think it is a contributing factor to our kids. Exactly. The kids that are getting expelled are not bad kids. They're struggling and so that's one of the, those are those kids that are coming in that don't know how to read and so forth. So I just wanted to put that out there and echo her. And I also wanted to echo her comments about Mr. Hinton doing an excellent job at HR. One of my, the attorneys that works at the firm, her partner applied for a par three position and within the month got high, yeah, went through the application, interview process, and is working at one of our school sites. So thanks, Mr. Hinton. One month, that's record time. I wanted to just point out a few of the MOUs that are on today's consent agenda. The food bank, the food distribution at each site, that's, you know, some of the hard work of Yvette Padilla or, Yvette? For our community schools coordinator. I also, the MOU for the Hartnell College Foundation to provide STEM coding three times a week at Elsal after school. That's excellent. And I don't even know, you should probably stand up for this and let me clap over the Folclorico program that, by Donatillo, that's on our consent agenda.
I'm passing that clap that way.
Anna, Superintendent Burns, and Mr. Warta, and of course, the persistence of Donatillo for the first time, I think, is providing Folclorico classes for Elsal Middle School. So, so excited. Thanks for that work. Prop twenty-eight funding, I see the reports on there on our consent. I'd like to see a bigger report presented to the, to the board on what's being done at each site with those funds. And the last thing was, I wanted to thank Speaker Robert Rivas for including Elsal under a program through VSP that's going to be offering free eye exams and free glasses onsite coming up on October twentieth, October twenty-first, from nine AM to five PM. And again, this is the work of Dr. Purnell, Yvette Romos, and Speaker Rivas. So thank you for that.
Mr. Antipacheco.
Well, I would like to say that at Salinas High School, we were actually brought into awareness of Suicide Prevention Month and the Wellness Center was giving away these little papers, a little lifesaver to every student, be a lifesaver and to honor that it's Suicide Prevention Month. And it created awareness because I will be honest, I myself was not aware that it's Suicide Prevention Month. And we were able to see how it's an important month for that reason. However, I have a question that I myself not only have, but also other peers that we have been wondering, why was minimum day created for several times around this school year? It's not that we're complaining, it's just that we're just wondering what was the reason behind that.
So typically during board member comments, we don't respond, but because it's you, this is opportunity for high school staff to do professional development and focus on professional learning communities to increase their collaboration amongst each other to better support students. So that's why the minimum days were created.
Thank you for your response.
Mr. Keith?
Thank you. I was also able to attend some open houses. I attended Harden and La Paz. But I just wanted to say thank you to all the district employees that helped put on open houses. It was beautiful weather that evening. You couldn't find a parking spot if you wanted to buy one at Harden and La Paz. It was a great turnout. I do want to thank staff as well. It's nice when we see, for example, seeing Harden's cheer program. I know that was something, that was a request when I was early, new to the Board of Trustees, trying to get some funding out there. And so thank you for seeing that program in place and seeing our cheerleaders out there. And the crowd was excited to see that program. Also for Ms. Parker and the band at Harden did an excellent job. And it's just nice to see those, those programs funded and nice instruments. And again, I think continuation of Prop twenty-eight, we will continue to build on those. Just want to thank Mr. Elliott with Applied Technology at La Paz and Mr. Shriver, the music teacher at La Paz as well. I think there's nothing more intimidating when you have trustees sitting in the audience than staying after the fact and asking questions. So they were great and then, you know, Mr. Burns gets follow-up questions. And so I appreciate everybody's patience when we do that. I attended last week the Career Technical Education and our Regional Occupation Joint Powers Agreement Meeting at Salinas High. We had great presentations done by the Salinas High Fast Academy, woodshop students, and the drafting program. Dinner was provided by our ROP Culinary Program, an excellent meal. And again, these are board members throughout the county that participate in our joint powers authority. And in November, it will be in King City. And that's important and hopefully some other trustees can attend that as well because much to trustee Warta's comment is we will see King City's new FFA facility. As we know, as a district, our FFA facility that supports Rancho, North High, and Alvarez, that lease will be expiring here probably shortly. And I think it'd be great for the trustees to see a new modern facility and see how they have incorporated it, maybe how they funded it. I think it was actually through a bond. They also said they have seven ag teachers in King City for two high schools so that you can see they're really building up that program. And I think we actually lost a couple of our teachers to King City. And so just want to pass that on, that month of November, I can provide a date, but I think that's worthy. I know Superintendent Burns and I attended that maybe last year. It was still under construction. They do an excellent meal down there, but I just wanted to pass that on. So that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ross?
Well, I think SVFT, Katie, Steve, and the whole SVFT group for the invitation last Friday was something I always looked forward to, kind of greeting and socializing with the staff, teachers, and anyone that showed up. And what was even nice was bringing the families and just forming that line and having that conversation, having tacos and quesadillas. That was just great. Also, not having any slips here from the public, I mean, it's a good thing. The reason it's a good thing is because we are really a preventive service. We are really answering the questions that the community constituents want from us, and we're not having them here come and express their concern or dissatisfaction over what's going on. I know that I'm following up on two things. One is the cell towers, which I promised I would get back to constituent that sent me some questions, were very good questions. And so, you know, they're valid concerns that we should look into them. It's talking about some cell towers that we have at El Sal High, El Sal Middle School, and El Puente. And we just needed to find out, I mean, answer these questions because he was giving a response, but it was kind of vague. So we want to be able to give him more concrete answers that really makes more sense to him and the constituents. One of them was before the installation of these cell towers, did the district do an independent environment study to see the potential risk to students, staff, and the community? If so, is that data information available? If not, why not? Number two was the community informed before they were installed? Why was the staff or community not informed? Three, why were there, these towers only placed in El Sal High, El Sal Middle School, and El Puente? And four, how much money did the cell towers company pay the district? How is that money used? Is it only used for the schools where the towers are placed, or does it go to the district general fund? So those are questions that we need to get answers and just give it out to the community because we don't want them to be in the guessing as to if, you know, there's something that we are not sharing with the community. The other, the other thing that I'm going to do a request is for the Avid program. Avid program, they have it in El Sal, and it's a motivational and academic program. It's, I think they have about a hundred and eighty kids, and it's very successful. And so one thing that they asked was about doing a field trip to Hartnell College maybe twice or three times a year. And just wanted to kind of look at if that's something that would be possible, looking at the budget and see if there's money to make that happen for these kids because they've earned and they've done very well. They have it at the freshman, sophomore, junior, senior level, and these kids are just remarkable. That's all.
Okay. All right.
We have groundbreaking coming up at El Sal High School this Thursday at three o'clock. So if anybody out there wants to go, it should be a good event.
I didn't get invited.
Who knew? We didn't know.
I just knew just now.
Sorry, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I'm being quiet.
It's football season. We had North High and El Sal last weekend, probably one of the best games I've seen in the past ten years. It was a really competitive game. It's just too bad someone had to win and someone had to lose, but it was a great game between the two teams. I applaud both teams for their efforts. This is Beecher Smith's last board meeting.
What?
So Elizabeth will be taking over next week, or next time we're here on the twenty-fourth. So thank you for all the work you've done and all your efforts and all the late nights.
It's not the last.
Okay.
Sitting there, sitting there.
Sitting there, that's your last one. Yeah. I'd also like to applaud Mr. Hinton. Last year, we had over a hundred classified spots still at the beginning of the year. What are we down to right now, Mr. Hinton? Roughly?
Ninety-nine.
I think we're closer to about thirty.
Thirty, okay.
Ninety.
We're making progress, making progress. Thank you.
Mr. Burns?
Let me see where I'm at here. So just to follow up on trustee Rojas as well, so I've reached out to staff there to give me a date to come out and meet with them, so I'm just waiting to hear back from that. I'll let you know if you want to attend as well to talk about the cell towers. The, in Avid, you can see in the budget tonight that the school has money to support Avid field trips to Hartnell, which are not that expensive. And we'll have to follow up with the principal at El Sal too on notifying people about the groundbreaking. So, great to see the positive energy on our school campuses. Lot of activities helping promote positive school climate and culture. Sometimes we get too hyper-focused on the two or three percent of the students not involved in the positive culture, so I think we need to focus on the ninety-seven percent that are doing really great things and continue to highlight those things. Also want to congratulate our student athletes at Everett Alvarez High School that helped their football coach create a special proposal to his fiancee that was picked up on social media, was also on KSBW. So if you haven't seen it, you can go watch it. Congratulations, Coach Brent and his soon-to-be-wife Monica. But the students were active part in that special presentation, so, and they won the football game. And to follow up with President Felice, actually neither of those teams lost, they tied, but we had to have a winner, so they played more time, but great game all around. The, always great to see our student board reports. It's our way of bringing the student voice to the school board and a reminder that of why we do the work and what our focus is, is bringing our kids to the table. Picked up on, the web leaders are awesome in the presentation, and high schools you'll hear from link leaders as well, similar program. Next week, we have the honor of hosting the county superintendents at Washington Middle School to get a tour of the Wellness Center. You saw in their presentation the tremendous work they're doing in their Wellness Center. And county superintendent reached out and said, we'd love to come do a tour and hear all the great resources and services being provided. So we are opening our doors to them, and I appreciate our principal, Ms. Lopez, for opening the doors to, to our community. Also, just wanted to reinforce, you know, traffic at our school sites is always heavy in the morning, always heavy in the afternoons, but I do see a lot of staff collaboration and coordination going into reducing some of the frustration. Obviously, a lot of construction going on, but we're being mindful to parent needs to get their students to school on time, as well as the staff needs to get to the parking lots on time. So thank you for all that collaboration and coordination. Over the past few months, I've had many conversations with members of our community about the state of our district and the impact schools have on shaping the current and future of our city around the state and beyond. Last week, one of those meetings included a presentation from a group of our students at a local Rotary event, and the students shared their goals for the community and for civic engagement. And what I was impressed with is, within the dialogue, one of the students reminded the adults in the room that they are preparing for their future through learning soft skills that will make them successful. And they had to explain soft skills to the adults, right? Should I ask, should I test you off? Oh. So they reiterated communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity. And so I was super impressed with that because it's more than just learning calculus, it's more than just learning the common core. It's also learning how to be successful in the world around us. So it's great to see our young people like Astraea too and others in our community doing great work. As you might have known, if you follow my calendar, last week I was in Sacramento for a couple of days and participated in the State High School Superintendent's Network, and we discussed topics that are common, such as the impact of the late start time, which is a common area of conversation because majority of high school superintendents around the state were never asked how that would impact their schools, especially in communities like ours. We also spent a lot of time talking about cellphone bans, since you know the governor's office put out some, some conversations or dialogue that's coming about cellphone bans. And so we're a little bit ahead of the curve in, in starting with our middle schools and being able to track that data and see how we can then escalate that up through grade levels as we go. We also talked about challenges with dual enrollment and then the limitations of Prop twenty-eight. So Prop twenty-eight came up because of the eighty-twenty percent rule that makes it difficult for high school districts compared to elementary districts that haven't normally hired full-time music and arts teachers where high school, typically we have a plethora of different options in the arts and music. So it was an excellent opportunity to network and talk with legislative lobbyists and talk about the impacts of future legislation as well. So there's more of that to come. Also want to thank Cardier for working to get the district nurses to come and do some training for district administrators on using of EpiPen as well as the Narcan for fentanyl overdose. That was well received last week, and nobody got hurt during the presentation. So that was well done. And then tonight, as we adjourn, you know, there's a lot of people we can choose to honor, and tonight I'm going to honor James Earl Jones, who passed away today. With, just kind of reading a quote from the movie Field of Dreams, and I'm not going to imitate his voice, y'all can go listen to it yourself, but in there he has a monologue where he says, "The one constant through all the years has been baseball. America has rolled by like an army of steamrollers. It's been erased like a blackboard, rebuilt and erased again, but baseball has marked the time. The field, this game, is part of our past. It reminds us of all that was once good and what could be again." And the reason I point that out is in the next few weeks or month, the district will have a new superintendent. It's my wish that the new leader is authentically welcomed and embraced by our community staff and our leaders, and like baseball was to the Field of Dreams, impacting students will be to the expected outcomes of everybody's work. So I'm going to be a little philosophical in the next few meetings before I'm gone so you can be reminded that I'm not just a humorous guy. Okay, I think that's all I have.
Okay. I have one more thank you to Mr. Herrera. Thank you for your picture on the wall. I know I've been razzing you for the past few meetings.
I'd like to thank my stunt double.
Okay. And see, the board will be holding a public hearing to receive input on sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials for Salinas High School District students. Ms. Bastler.
Katie Bastler, SVFT president. It was very nice to know that there were some concerns about textbook, textbooks, and when I reached out to Kim McCulloch, she immediately researched, found out that the textbooks were available, found some misinformation, and so that responsiveness makes sure that students and teachers have the materials that they need, and it's appreciated. Thank you for all the work.
Anybody else?
The board will hold a public hearing to receive input on Salinas Valley Federation of Teachers' Sunshine Proposal for the twenty-five, twenty-six negotiations with the district.
Ms. Bastler.
Went for a run this morning, gonna get some more.
There you go. Go ahead.
Katie Bastler, President of Salinas Valley Federation of Teachers. You'll notice that there are many articles listed on the sunshine letter, and a lot of it is cleanup. And the last time we negotiated, it was a very long negotiation session. I believe it went through three different assistant superintendents of HR. SVFT was exhausted reviewing with each new assistant soup that came in what had been bargained and agreed to. We are hopeful that Mr. Hinton and SVFT and their team will be able to complete it within a year. Thank you.
Anybody else?
The board will hold a public hearing to receive input on district sunshine proposal for the twenty-five, twenty-six negotiations with Salinas Valley Federation teachers. Ms. Bastler, I'm glad you didn't go very far.
You gotta open up the hearing. We appreciate Mr. Hinton and the superintendent working with us to get this on the board agenda in order to meet the timelines outlined in contract. Thank you.
Anybody else?
The board will hold a public hearing to receive input on adoption of Resolution twenty-four ninety-nine, the GAN limit.
Thank you, Emma. Did you close it or?
No, I opened it, right there. Go ahead, Ms. Bastler.
SVFT would like to show their appreciation to the business office and the diligent work of Ann Agian and her team for making sure that this is always, this absurd thing is always up to date. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Action items, Resolution twenty-four ninety-eight, attendance awareness month.
I just had, I'm sorry, President Felice on that last one. Are we getting a presentation on that for the unaudited financials?
Yes. On the resolution, anybody?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms.
This is eight A, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Is there going to be a presentation? Because I have some questions about the information that was provided.
Yeah, Mr. Hader is prepared to go over the, the report that's in there.
Okay. I'll wait for her.
Anybody else?
I think you can do it from there, no?
It was the clicker.
I'll be up there.
It's nice and cool in here.
So the purpose is just to do a media campaign with the public and with the students. It is something that's nationally done and also in California. And due to the number of students post-pandemic that we've seen across all the different districts, especially Monterey County, and we're trying to reestablish the importance of that attendance does matter. So it really is about messaging that attendance matters and for us to work as a collective team to inform students and parents about coming to school, and if you can't come to school, how can we help you? And then, of course, your indicator that I think your data is talking about is what we call chronic absenteeism. So chronic absentee by the state is ten percent or more of the school year that you miss for any reason. And so we've been monitoring that across our dashboard, and then obviously anyone with twenty or thirty percent attendance for any reason would miss quite a lot of school. And so how do we support kids getting into the appropriate programs and the support so that they can get their work and their education and then the services? So just educating people and parents about what is chronic absenteeism. So we have a lot of families that will excuse their student because they're home ill, but then over time, they may have missed thirty percent of the school year. And it is different than unexcused absences, which is treated as a different way in our attendance system. I think the idea is just engaging students, recognizing attendance, making sure we're making connections, providing any early outreach. One thing is also taking attendance and following up right away, and then just monitoring. And so I know all of our schools are working hard. Our Wellness Center is going to start pulling data on students who are being referred and what their attendance is and what we can do to help them. And then just the idea of just communicating it with the families, because we do know that sometimes some of our older students are staying home to take care of younger siblings or other issues, so we want to talk about how can we help you with that. And the campaign activities is really from, from our point of view, just communicating out social media reminders. Each school can or is supported to promote any kind of positive attendance recognition. And then what we'll be doing is we'll be focusing on tiers of support. You know, why are you not coming to school? What can we do to support you? And are you, can we provide you with an alternative way that we can serve you? And are you, can we provide you with an alternative way that we can serve you? I think each school will continue to message this, and obviously, this happens throughout the year, so it's not something we're going to just do in a month, but we are wanting to focus on it. The research is that when students do not establish at the beginning of the year a good attendance habit, it is more likely that they will fall behind and they will continue to have those attendance issues throughout the school year. So that's why it is launched in this time of year. But obviously, after winter break or any other time is a good time to remind students of coming to school. This is the timeline that we're, that most schools follow, and you know, it's up to the school how they want to handle it. In our district, we'll be looking at our initial launch, where are our students and who do we need to serve and support. And then right in December, we'll look at our attendance for what we call Period 1 attendance reporting. And usually, right after, we see that in January, we reboot and try to make sure everyone is coming back. I know sometimes our students might be gone for a longer holiday. That's been an issue. And then we'll continue that support throughout the P2, Period 2 attendance until the, it's usually end of March or beginning of April, depending on our school calendar. And P2 is what we look at for comparing from prior year. This will be in addition to just looking at individual students who are chronically absent. And this is just some post-data from last year of the number of students per school and then the percent of who are considered chronically absent according to our data that we have in our system.
So this one is perfect attendance?
Oh, I'm sorry, perfect attendance, sorry. Reading that backwards. So yes, no absences, not na absence. So that's perfect attendance, which my kids always wanted, but they never got. And so perfect attendance is good. This is the next one, not attending, 10% to 20% of the school year. And that could also be, you know, consistently missing first and second period, and it adds up to the equivalent of 10%. This is also the 20 or higher percent of students, so over 20% of the school year. And you'll notice that some of the higher percentages are at our alternative programs, and those attendance, those are designed for students who need support. So we're aware of that and trying to look at different ways we can support them to make sure they're coming or they get extra help. The fiscal impact is important, too, because we do rely on, once we've staffed and we have students in class and we provide them with services, we do, are able to fund the cost of those for attendance. And when we dip below a certain percent, that becomes a concern. So it is something to be mindful of in terms of our percent. I know all of our school districts in Monterey County have decreased over the last several years from what we would call an average, 95% is an average ADA, P2, and some are dipping into 93 or 92. So it's good to get it back up again as we're starting to think of ways to support our students. And then this is also just looking at the ADA by site. And that was just an overview. Just, it's really about educating our students and families about that it does matter and that it's harder when you miss a lot of class to come back in and join the group and feel comfortable. And so whatever we're going to do, I'm going to support, my office will support each school with any, any kind of support plans that they would like to have. And then I'm working with the wellness center staff and with Ms. Vivid over with pupil personnel and support to coordinate support for students who are missing absences. I do want to recognize that we have a new Child Welfare and Attendance Clerk who's doing an outstanding job, filling, coming in and working with Ms. Vivid. And so we're going to have a lot more comprehensive data that we haven't seen in a different format. And each school will be getting that data at our next couple of weeks, and then they'll be able to work together with, with those teams to see what else we can do to support.
Let's have a couple of questions. So in the resolution, it said that we would identify the causes of absenteeism. So are you able to articulate, well, just one or two of the major causes of absenteeism?
So the majority of what I'm seeing on rationale is unable to get to school for different reasons, and then also not feeling well. And so not feeling well could be physically not feeling well or socially and emotionally not feeling well. Those are the two top reasons that we've noticed students are missing.
And the follow-up question, what's the district's plan to address those two causes so that we can support those students and get them in the classroom?
Yeah, I think it's educating why they're not getting to school, like what's the barrier? And one of them is sometimes staying home and taking care of younger siblings. So that's, you know, working with the family about that your student needs to come. The social, emotional, or physical issues, we need to work with the family to see if we can provide support, or do they need an alternative educational program that we, maybe we don't want to wait too long when they're at a regular high school, that they've missed lots of time and now they're behind. So that is more of a just-in-time response. But I do think it's working with our attendance teams, the intervention supports that the sites can have, and the assistant principals who are overseeing attendance. And then I was talking with both of our alternative programs of thinking of different ways we can get kids in and out of programs more quickly so that they don't miss school.
You said the average was 95% ADA. Is that our goal, or do we want to go higher?
And I think that's a really good goal for us. I think we, I know you want to speak to that a little bit, what's what we'd like to see this year.
So historically, pre-COVID, our average was 94%. And during that time, as a job alike, so we have the attendance clerk, the attendance specialist at the school side, and we would always set a goal, right? And that goal realistically was to increase ADA by half a percent. And then, of course, during COVID, you know, we struggled a little, and the average since then has been 92. Although, you know, we sometimes wanted to be, get back to the 94, it's not that easy to do. So I think bringing awareness and having a campaign, making everybody aware is extremely important. But yeah, but that's right now currently, since the last, for the last few couple of years, it's been 92% historically.
Thank you for answering my questions. Thank you.
Anybody else? Can I get a motion?
I'm not sure. I was looking at the percentage and it, and it kind of seems like there was kind of a, every year, it was kind of all the same schools that had the same ADA rate being pretty low. And I was wondering maybe if, if there was something that we could kind of learn from the other schools that are doing something that their attendance rate is high. I mean, Washington had a very good presentation, offering wild cards and then going on field trips, stuff like that, maybe incentive program that will kind of motivate them to be in school more often.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I asked our principals and assistant principals to let us know what they think would work for their school and what, how can we help them?
The district still has a renaissance program as well, which rewards students for perfect attendance, things of that nature. So this is a, this is really a way to look at this more than just a few ways to try to improve attendance, but really look more thoroughly across the system and to connect it with the multi-tiered system of support. So your question, Trustee Huerta, part of this is going to be finding information about why kids are not coming to school through, when they do come to school, getting them and their parents in to have anecdotal conversations with them, to collect anecdotal data on what that looks like. If you, if you look at the data through the lens of numbers, you're talking about 950 students a day in our district that are missing school. So I think we need to have a broad viewpoint of how we're doing this work and then to get more focused with, the resolution is the first step, and then building this out to have a comprehensive approach over time. You know, the principals initially said, well, we have a lot on our plate right now. To try to do one more thing would be too much, but a lot of this is, are things they're already doing. And from a district perspective, to be able to push things out to parents, not just through social media, but through all of the different channels that parents have access to, the literature, to be able to not, you know, to tell them why it's important for their students to come to school, you know, beyond just the learning loss, but also the social loss. And then also then to be really transparent with our community. And, you know, when, when we have, in '23, '24, we could potentially have lost $19 million in revenue. That's a lot of revenue that goes back into the classroom, that goes back into program, that goes back into supporting students. So that, you know, those are significant ways through this work, through that resolution, to get started and get refocused on making sure kids are coming to school.
Anybody else? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Resolution 24100, textbook sufficiency and instructional materials for Salines Street High School District students. Questions? Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Carrillo. Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Herrera. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, five to zero. Salines Valley Federation Teachers' Sunshine Proposal. Questions? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Carrillo. Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Keatties. All in favor? Aye. District's Sunshine Proposal for 25-26 negotiations with Salines Valley Federation Teachers. Questions? Can I get a motion? Mr. Keatties, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Rojas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve 23-24 unaudited actials. Questions? Questions? Okay, Ms. Anna, go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, I give my presentation. Perfect.
Okay, thank you, President Felice. So today, I'm here to present the unaudited actials for 2023-24, which is the year that just, fiscal year that just ended. And the unaudited actials are actials for the fiscal year 23-24. However, they're unaudited, meaning that the auditors have started auditing our books, but they are not complete yet. So they'll be here the week of the 23rd in person to review some of these numbers and audit some of these numbers. And then hopefully, they'll finalize the audit in the month of December, and then we will present that to you in the month of January. So with that, what you have in front of you here is the actials. But I wanted to review these with you, starting with the general fund and restricted, which is the first column. So what I'd like to review with you today is truly, what was the last budget that you approved, right, for the unaudited, for the general fund compared to where we ended the year? And I'm just going to really point out some of the major differences for you, because I want to make you aware of that. So the very first line item that you see here is the LCFF revenue, 180.5 million at second, I mean, I'm sorry, at estimated actials, which was brought to you at the beginning of January, I mean, June, for approval at the end of June. We had estimated 175.7 million. And the difference there, $4.8 million, is due to a prior year adjustment. So normally, the, the way the LCFF works is the state will provide you with pretty much an estimate that you work on based on your ADA. However, throughout the year, if other districts do their auditing process have additional revenue, which is overestimated or underestimated, more revenue becomes available for other districts, and they will provide us with additional dollars, right? So in this case, we received an additional $4.8 million. The other major difference, which is the federal revenue that was right on, it was exactly 38,509. Other state revenue, we had budgeted 7.3 million, and we ended at 8.4. And the difference here, the major difference here is the lottery, we received close to half a million dollars more than projected. And the same thing with transportation allocation. Right, and transportation allocation is also based on prior year statewide. So many times, they'll provide us with revisions throughout the school year, meaning that our revenue for the general fund ended at 196.4 million dollars. Our expenditures, as far as certificated salaries, we were really close with certificate, classified, and benefits. The adjustment was $480,000 more, but of course, that is due to some of the positions that aren't, that aren't filled throughout the year. So that's a $482,000 difference. And then the other was the capital outlay. The capital outlay, we had a budget of 6.2, we ended with 5.3, and we had 186,000. And the reason for that is because we have the Everett Alvarez Field House that we are working on, right? We didn't get DSA approval. We're very close to getting that approval, and as soon as that's done, we'll go ahead and get that project going. And other than that, in regards to the general fund, those were the major differences. Everything else was very close as far as what we budget, what you approved as a budget revision to where we ended. So with that first column, I just want to review it really quickly. Again, total revenues, 196.4 million, total expenditures, 157.1 million. And then we have other finances, which is the 34.3. The majority of that is due to the contributions from the general fund to restricted programs, which is special education, the contribution to ROP, and the contribution for the maintenance as well. So our net increase in general fund is 4.9 million, and deemed balance at 42.5 million dollars. And our reserve is 12.7%. Now supplemental concentration, as far as the revenue that was budgeted, the 73.3 million, that was very close. We received an increase of about $35,000, but very close to the budget that you approved. Major difference in salary and benefits of $2.3 million savings in that. And then as well as some of the services and other operating expenditures, we have some agreements that we had in place that weren't fully spent, and that was about $1.4 million under supplemental concentration. So our total expenditure is 79 million, and that increased our, our fund balance by really 5.6 million dollars. So, I mean, decrease, I'm sorry, our, well, when you look at the revenues over expenditure sum, it's 5.6 million dollars. So our beginning fund balance is 21.8, our ending fund balance total 16.1 million. I do want to point out here that at the last budget, when I brought it to you, we said we were going to have a carryover at about 10.5 million dollars. That increased, right, due to all the savings that we had, to 16.1 million dollars. So that is our carryover from one year to the next. So our budgets, you know, will be adjusted to account for that additional revenue of 5.6 million dollars. And then as far as our general fund restricted, there you will see that our total revenue was 64.9, and our total expenditure is 99 million. So our total, the total increase is 617,000. Now, here it looks a little, I just want to remind you that we normally get revenue of 62.9, but our budgeted expenditures are 99 million. And the reason for that is because a lot of those dollars that we get to carry over from one year to the next due to them being grants, we had a beginning balance of 42.5, right? So some of those get budgeted into those categories. So here, our ending balance is 43.1 million dollars. And at this time, I will open it up for questions as far as the general fund. Okay. So then moving on to all the other funds. And here you have, of course, your student activity, which is our ASB accounts. We have adult fund, the cafeteria fund, deferred maintenance, special reserve, post-employment benefit fund, our building fund, capital facilities fund, school facilities, and special reserve for the capital outlay, and Fund 73, which are the scholarships. And no major differences in any of these, and really nothing that I wanted to highlight here. There are really no concerns as far as the dollars that have been budgeted and where we ended the year.
Are we going to cover the categorical budget balances?
Yes, definitely. So this slide here will provide you with the categorical budget balances, and these are the site grants, right? So for Title I, we received a total of $4.9 million district-wide. And our balance at June 30th, the money that didn't, wasn't spent at the end of the fiscal year is 552,000, which is 11%. Title I SEAs are supplemental educational services. We had a balance of 44,590, which is a balance of 10.2%. Title III LEAP, balance of 222,000, balance of 26%. And Title III Immigrant, that is a balance of 20,000 for a total of 33%, which is interesting here. One of the things that I wanted to point out is- Which is interesting here, one of the things that I wanted to point out is the grants that have the smaller balances, right, have the larger um ending fund balance. Now, for these four grants, what we will do is normally at the end of June thirtieth, whatever money isn't spent, we don't send it back to the state, we are under the fifteen-percent threshold, which we said we didn't have to file a waiver. But what we'll do is we normally reallocate those dollars, right? So they become part of the new allocation for this school year, and it gets reallocated based on their duplicated data, right, unduplicated numbers. So that's what happens to those balances. Here, we are starting um to schedule our budget meetings with the administrators to review this information with them as well as the new year's um budget, along with their plan to ensure that, you know, we continue to look at this. And it's very regularly to make sure that the funds are being spent and the revisions are taking place as needed, right? Because the plan and the budget that gets approved at the beginning of the year, sometimes, you know, things change, um, needs change, and they have the, an opportunity to revise their budget throughout the year as well. As far as the supplemental concentration, these dollars do not get reallocated to the s- school site. That just becomes part of our ending balance of that sixteen-million dollars that we talked about on the prior slide. Now, I also included, and I know you like to see the um budget balances by school site, and I'm providing that to you here. You will see that um for most of the sites, they did a lot better this year than they did last year as far as spending their funds. Now, in regards to the formula funds, you will see that some spent, um, they were over, you know, they overexpended. And I, we allow that, we we give them the okay to go ahead and overexpend by at least five percent. It's really hard to get it right on the penny, right, when it comes to formula funds. So what normally happens is they do have a negative, then they will start with the, that negative carries over to their new, to their new budget in the new year. Um, so if you have any questions in regards, I don't think I wanna go unless you want me to. I can go through each site specific, but.
I just have a question, so then, for Elsasal, then they use, they had the least amount unspent.
Of Title One.
Title One.
Yes, so they had two-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars left. For Title One. And sometimes, you know, with Title Three LEP, it's really interesting, we provide a lot of ideas on how they can spend um those dollars. And it's, for some reason, it becomes very difficult for some of the schools as to to, you know, to spend that money. But we will continue to work with them on that.
So just to to clarify that, so the titles, the federal money?
Yeah.
Sometimes have such um um difficult restrictions on your usage that we end up with something like this. So at Washington Middle School, you know, there's quite a bit of their dollars spent, and then there's thirty-eight percent of three grand. So I don't know how much we wanna make of that per se, but I think, I think we have to look at, like, the Title Three LEP dollars and and look at the total amount that we're not using and figure out why as a system that's not being used.
Yeah.
President Feliz, I just, I think it's so important, especially for our new uh student trustee to, this really irritates me again, and I appreciate when Anna puts us together so transparent that, you know, we have other schools almost overspending their supplemental concentration at Slingsford High. They didn't spend a hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand. And we have teachers that cannot get funding for PE leadership class for thirteen sped students and three general ed students for field trips. This is what frustrates me, and I know that was last fiscal year, but this is something that I think you as a student trustee, and you attend that school, when you go to site council and you talk to your principal, Mr. Mariscow, this is, this is not good when you go to Alisal, and they can magically spend every dime. And we go to Mary White, and she uh had twenty-thousand dollars uh left. So kudos to those schools, but a- again, I know we have some new principals, but this is uncalled for.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I've said it, and, you know, as
Forty percent.
Representing, you know, that area, I don't know how this is happening, I I don't. Um, when we're hearing that things aren't getting funded and cut, and we have two-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand. Now, like Superintendent Burns said, a lot of this is restricted, but supplemental concentration, you can use for field trips, right?
Yes.
And we're, we're saving pennies over there, I guess, or we think that it's, and Anna said a great job. It doesn't go back to Slingsford High next year.
Yeah.
It goes back into the funnel, and it gets redistributed to all of our schools. So there's no incentive, right? When we say, no, we're not gonna do it this year, next year, we're gonna do it. We might not be able to.
Yeah. To to um take that a step further, too, it's part of the reason why Anna's put in monthly meetings with principals to work with. We have a few new principals as well, to work with them on how to spend these budgets, right? And so that they don't get caught in saying no, no, no to everything, because they're afraid of the parameters versus having a good concrete plan up front of how to spend them. So um I appreciate trustee Riquete's pointing it out um that way as well.
Again, Elsasal, it looks like they're spending their money very
Yes.
Very well, I'm happy to see that.
Looks like Alisal was best there, so that's good.
Yeah.
And I guarantee, next year, El Fuente will be there.
Oh, it'll be zero.
He's already asking for money. Already asking for money.
And I do appreciate El Fuente, for example, here, they are really good on spending and make every effort to spend their categorical dollars. Right, and that's the reason why they have some money left over in their um formula funds. And formula funds, it's a small allocation for them, but they still, they still have a balance. But yeah, I agree, um, those dollars should be spent.
Thank you.
You're welcome, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Anna.
And with that, if I may, before we approve, um, I did, um, I, we made a change on the state-approved report, and it's a form that is not required for me, for me to bring for approval, but I always include it, and this is the asset form. Um, the work in progress, information, the acquisition ca- dates came in a little late, and we just got those numbers late Friday after the report was already published for the board. Um, so with that, I do have copies for the board, if they'd like to take um a copy with you. And if you have any questions, please give me a call. But the approval of the, this action item will be with that change, please.
Yep, perfect.
Can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
Mr. Carrillo, Mr. Riquete first. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Adopt resolution twenty-four ninety-nine, GAN limits. Questions? Can I get a motion?
So.
Second, Mr. Huerta? All in favor?
Aye.
Information items, first reading board policy forty-one-two-point-two certification. Questions? First reading board policy fifty-one-twenty-six, awards for achievements. Questions? First reading board policy sixty-one-one-five, ceremonies and observations. First reading board policy sixty-one forty-one-point-two, recognition of religious beliefs and customs. Questions? First reading board policy sixty-one seventy-five, migrant education. Questions? First reading, supervi- supervi- supervisor supervisor of physical services, physical services job description. Questions?
Is is this your, good, good, nice.
Anna needs help.
I know, so where this is.
It's already budgeted, isn't it?
Yeah, of course.
All right, nothing, okay. Um, consent, do we wanna pull anything? Anybody have anything to pull?
So just i- in item U.
U? Adopt minutes.
Where's the minutes? I can't even find it on mine, okay. There's one typo in there, the word principal AL should be principal LE. So we'll, if we approve it, we'll make that change.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment about one of them. You wanna pull it? It's the prop
Pull it, yeah.
Uh, the prop twenty-eight, I said it in my comments, yes. Item S.
Item S, okay. Can I get a motion then?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item S.
And you will be fixed.
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Carrillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, go ahead.
And again, just to, again, thank Anna, Superintendent Burns, the staff for the folk medical program that's going in E, there at Elsasal Middle School. But I would like to see even more, and so I know that Superintendent Burns gave us an update on his meeting in Sacramento on how they're gonna work on trying to, I don't know if they're gonna change legislatively, change some of those restrictions on how we spend it, uh, if that's even possible. But um I would like to see as, uh, see the, what the school sites, I think they submitted a request of what they wanted to see at each site for the, for their prop twenty-eight, maybe just as an informational item.
Yeah, so this report's just a required narrative we have to send in for the state.
Yeah.
And then we can bring back to you
More details.
what each school has requested for this year.
Okay, anybody else?
Will Rancho San Juan have a facility for band and choir? Because as to my understanding, they didn't have one. And the arts is an important aspect of education as well, it helps students to concentrate better in school. So how will it look like in Rancho San Juan?
So it's on its way. It's currently in design, finishing, sent to the state for approval, which takes six to nine months. And then that'll eventually go out to bid and be built.
Thank you.
This this proposition here is eighty percent for um people, pay twenty percent for supply. So it's kinda like Mrs. Carrillo said, it kinda doesn't really make sense.
Yeah, but but we'll take the money, too, as we can use it.
Just take the money down.
Anything else? Okay, can I get a motion on
Motion.
Consent item S, Ms. Carrillo, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Huerta, very good, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So before you adjourn, uh, if I can ask um Ms. Smith, the future board meetings, is that correct, October fifteenth? Or should it be October ninth or eighth, I mean, eighth? The first meeting is in October is the second, Tuesday is the eighth? Since the fifteenth? I just wanna make sure, do we correct it for the next meeting? Okay.
On board docs?
It's in board doc, yeah. So under future meetings? Yeah.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second, second, Mr. Rojas? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
So the next meeting is when B is gonna